Good evening, everyone. Nice to see a room full. And y'all are certainly welcome. I know the Scouts might want to learn a lot about school board if they want to stay through the whole meeting.
I think they actually have to.
Oh, do you?
This is earning a merit badge, if I'm not mistaken.
I was being facetious. I was going to protect you guys. I'm sorry. But you're welcome anyway. Glad to have you and all of our other guests. I'd like to call our meeting to order and we'll have a moment of silence at the beginning of our meeting. So if you'll join me in a moment of silence. Next, we'll have our pledge of allegiance by, is it troop 45 scouts? So if y'all will just come up and get on camera now. I think Dr. Thorson has told you that so you can be celebrities tomorrow and you can look this up online whenever it gets posted and you can see it. If the rest of y'all will join us, the pledge of allegiance.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all.
Mr. and Abbot, if I could, I just wanted to touch base and share with the audience that this Boy Scout troop just replaced our state flag on the front of this building. It was quite worn and tattered and I think just before the meeting, they put a new flag out front for us. So we certainly appreciate that, guys. Thank you for your help with that.
Good job. Thank you. Then moving into agenda next is celebrating access. Excuse me. We're going to do Orchard Park. I was about to forget. I was going to ask you. He wasn't going to introduce the Scouts, so I was going to skip right over it.
Well, we're going to talk very briefly about something new we're doing in Orchard Park this year. We are really firm believers. We are really firm believers. Yes, thank you, man. We're really firm believers in personalized learning. We made some big strides in that last year. Personalized learning, for those of you who are not aware of what that actually entails, this is really kind of the three big points of personalized learning is that number one, you tailor your instruction to meet your students where they are. You go down, students who need extra help and pull them up, and you go up to the students who are already excelling and continue to push them even further. That's probably the big premise behind personalized learning. But there's also engagement using technology. These technologies are a big part of personalized learning. And also student voice and choice, which is what we're actually going to focus on today. We made big gains last year. I guess our traffic got a little messed up there in the transition. We, I'll just tell you really quickly that last year in reading, we went from 49% average reading back in 15, 16 to 16, 17 up to 69%. And a lot of that had to do with our personalized learning and reading using a program called LLI or Level Literacy Intervention. That program really allows us to not only assess students and kind of identify their exact reading level, but actually provides the instructional platform to actually go down or up or anywhere in between to meet our students' needs. And so we gained a good 20 points on our average reading group that way. Very similar results in math. You can't see it up there. I think we went from, I want to say 41% in math, all the way up to 59, 60%. So we did a really good job. Now, this year, we're kind of focusing in that middle speech bubble of their student voice and choice. And to identify that, we are going to actually use student electives. Electives are not something we typically see at an elementary school. This is in addition to our regularly scheduled specials like PE, art, music. This is a chance for students to go a little bit deeper into those areas and other areas and kind of find their gift, find their strength. And our whole idea is that when a child finds their gift, finds their strength, they get confidence and that confidence breeds additional confidence in other areas academically and personally and socially, et cetera. So I'm going to introduce a few folks, really important folks here. We've got a big crowd up here. This is Katie Zell, our wonderful PE teacher. This is Nicole Hicks, one of our very expert reading interventionists. We have Laura Addis, who is our fantastic music teacher. And then we have Jennifer Hyman, who's a wonderful art teacher. And the reason we brought them along is because, number one, we want to recognize them for doing a lot of their, a lot of the hard work behind the scenes for these electives, but also giving up a lot of their own time to kind of make some sacrifices scheduling-wise and so forth. Ms. Rochester, this is my assistant, Mrs. Rochester. She's going to talk about the scheduling and just kind of give us a little bit of background and then we'll have each of them talk about some of their electives.
So the way that we worked this into our schedule this year is we already had a 45-minute block at the end of the day for the students to have foreign language. Now, they didn't use the whole 45 minutes for that foreign language, so they pulled groups. Well, we thought, well, why can't we do some foreign language and then have an opportunity for these students to have choice and to focus on some of their gifts, some of the things that they really enjoy doing, something to highlight them and make them want to come to school every day just to go to cooking or just to go to music, an extra period for the day. We have seen these students get so excited when we just were mentioning the thought of a few of these ideas. And I'm going to tell you, it's a lot of work on these teachers. So not only is it double the planning for them, it was, how do we find these resources? Who do we contact to make this work for our school? And I'm just so proud and so thankful that they listened to my begging for so long. Please, 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 we can do this and have been flexible. Of course, there's going to be kinks in the system and that's why we're doing it this year to figure out. We had two, one kid was booked on the same elective and they really wanted both and I was like, brother, the same exact time, you really have to choose. So she made the choice to do one this semester and one the next. We are going to do semester electives this time. We're hoping that eventually we'll get the process down enough to do it quarterly, but for now, just semester long. We're just excited to give our students this opportunity and I think you'll get an opportunity later to see how excited they are.
All right. My name is Mrs. Zell. I'm a PE teacher. And as you can see, we have some PE-related electives. I do a lot of these during our PE time. This is more broken down into personalized for the students and a little bit more in-depth than those ideas and areas that we were working on. So there is no I and team. Those are two team sports. We do basketball and baseball, sorry, baseball softball. Today was my first day of doing the basketball slash softball slash basketball. And we kind of did the chart of what I want to know more of, what I already know of this sport, and then again, we'll do what I've learned, of course. So those are our two team sports and that was on Monday. So Tuesday is cardio crazy. They're going to personalize their own fitness plans and work on exercises that they want to continue to work on and develop. Those will have outside time with the track time, but also stations of exercising and things that they want to improve. Bump set spike is, of course, our volleyball team. So we'll work on the rules and actually playing the game and the correct way of using the rules and the rotations, not just at the actual skills themselves. And then the OP jumpers is the jump rope team where we will actually develop a routine, put it to music and hopefully, my goal is to actually perform it for the, some kind of audience at some point. So that's my first semester is those four. The second semester is A plus B, which is archery and badminton. So we will be working on those two throughout the second semester. Putting around, we're going to develop our own putt-putt kind of course and they'll actually get to work on putting and improve on their skills of putting and get to work on something that they actually developed and then they'll work on their skills of putting from that. Can jam and disc golf, we'll have the titles, but those are our two kind of frisbee kind of games. Those are kind of newer. I try to go to a PE convention every once in a while in Myrtle Beach and I learned about can jam a few years ago when I went there. So that was kind of a popular topic then. So hopefully the kids are interested in, because it's probably something they don't really know something about, because I had to, of course, go to the convention to actually learn about it. And then disc golf, we'll be working on setting up a little area in our yard and in our different places outside that I can actually work on, or the kids can actually work on, throwing their frisbees, working on the disc golf course. And then that is kids kind of joining and we're going to actually join together and develop their own personal game. So it could be anything, any equipment that I have, it's their choice of what kind of game. So we'll work on setting rules to that and applying that and hopefully taking it to other grades and during their PE times. And actually, they'll get to play the game that they developed. So that is my PE electives.
Just a quick word. We went from Google slides to PowerPoint and FYR. Lost one of our few more words up there.
I think I'm next.
There they are.
Yes. All right. Those are the electives I'm offering in music. If you'll go to the next slide, I'll talk about each one. This is our new piano lab that Mr. Whitrock and Ms. Rochester helped us get this year. We're very excited. We had our first class today in piano and the kids were overwhelmed. They were so excited, they couldn't wait to get to it. The next one is discovering instruments and they're going to play all the instruments in the music room. We're going to talk about how the sound is made and then at the end, toward the end, they'll make their own instruments. Okay? The drums class, we'll work on rhythm. We also got the drum, if you look at the picture on the right, you'll see the drums we got this year from the Grand. Thank you. And we're going to work a lot on rhythm in that group. The next one shows recording class. You'll see the little digital recorder. I'm going to teach them to use that. They'll go around the school on a little scavenger hunt, record some sounds, people. We'll learn the Quaver recording programs. You'll see on the left there and the mix pad recording program on their Chromebooks. And then we hope to, if we can work it out, go to a real recording studio. And then garage band, as you can see from the picture, this is our band last year. They performed, did you get to hear it, Ms. Hopkins? Didn't you get to hear it that day?
I think I was at that one.
Okay. I couldn't remember if you came or not. But they performed on, we had a little stage set up and they got to perform on it with the lights and stuff like that, spotlight. But they learned electric guitar, bass guitar, drums, keyboard. They sing and they do percussion. And the last one is fourth and fifth grade chorus. Each of one of these groups will perform at some point or they'll present a project.
Okay. And that leads to me, I'm Ms. Hyman. And this semester, I'm offering three, actually an arts and crafting, one and two, which will be considered first, second, and third is the arts and craft one, and then fourth and fifth grade will do the arts and crafting two. But the papering that you did, this is basically going to give students a firsthand experience in making their paper. They're going to get to make their paper and they're going to get to create collages and hopefully work on a collaborative art piece that we can install in the school. Next one, arts and crafting, oh, that's, sorry, you can go back. Sorry. I jumped ahead. Okay, my arts and crafting, as I said, this will be offered to second and third grade. That's what I'm calling arts and crafting one. And then arts and crafting two will be for my fourth and fifth graders. And it's basically just a time when they can come to the art room with their ideas. If they have materials and things that they want to use, they're welcome to do that. So this will just be a time to kind of explore a variety of materials and crafting. And then steampunk-ish is what I'm calling it. For those of you that don't know, steampunk is a subgenre of science fantasy that incorporates technology and aesthetic designs inspired by Victorian era 19th century and industrial steam-powered machinery. So I was trying to reach out to my boys and try to get them excited about some steampunk creations. They're going to create some 3D and even some wearable pieces from this and I hope maybe we can come wearing some of those things one day. And the next semester, now you can move on, I'll be offering weaving and my idea for this is to do an on-ground installation with the fences around the playgrounds is kind of what I'm thinking. And the upcycled art and sculpture will basically be found materials, recycling, repurposing materials and set and stage design, which leads me to Ms. Hicks. Set and stage design, we'll have a drama performance and I'm going to get some of my elective students onboard creating the stage design for their drama play, which brings me to Ms. Hicks.
I'm Ms. Hicks and I'm in charge of Drama Club. I'll talk about that first. We are doing Trolls this year. We will meet all year long. We had our first meeting today and the kids, they chose the scenes from the movie that they wanted to act out. And so we'll be having auditions in the next couple of weeks and they are super excited about it. I have a good little group of second and third graders and I think it's going to be really awesome. The second club that I'm offering is holidays around the world and we're going to be studying the different languages and cultures that we do through Rosetta Stone. And we're going to learn about holidays and celebrations in different parts of the world and we'll make things for our Taste of the World night to display and put around for that in March.
So I'm going to be talking about the rest of the electives that we have. Several of our students are very interested in STEM and STEAM and coding in general. We have a very great gifted and talented teacher at our school, Anna Sheriff. And she does a great job getting these children to think different. You know, they're going to be digging really deep into some of this instruction and they're actually going to be teaching our Day of Code this year. So she's doing it every day. She has a different group of kids that she's working with and there's only five in the group. So they're going to be working really hard this year to plan and teach our Day of Code. So come on down to our Day of Code. We have Cooking with Karen. If you don't know, we have a fantastic, fantastic cafeteria staff and Ms. Karen is the lead of that staff. She has graciously, with a little nudging, volunteered to create some cooking classes. So we're having our after-school program from a grant that we got from the state and the federal government. And those kids are going to be helping prepare for that after-school program, food and especially with some of the treats and the goodies and things. And they've got, she's got a really great plan for them and they are so excited about Cooking with Karen. Nursing necessities. We have Ms. Ilya at our school this year as our nurse. And so we have a safety plan for all of those children that signed up for nursing. We only have six. Same thing with Cooking with Karen. They have a permission slip that goes out to their parents so that they know what they're going to be doing. They're going to be actually taking each other's temperatures, doing each other's blood pressure. Now, let's say they do their normal job. So if a student comes in not feeling well, sick, all the students come prepare with their Chromebooks. They have a designated area where they go sit to the side until she's finished with her patient. So we have all the basics covered in that one, but the kids are very excited about it. Reading Around the World is an international book club where the students are going to be having a book club about specific cultures that we're studying. So I think our first one is Japan. They're reading a book and our representative for Japanese is going to be partner teaching that with Mrs. Price. Mrs. Price is fantastic. I don't know how she does it all during the day, but she wanted to take this on too. And so she was so excited to open up her library to two different small groups to have a book club and to dig a little bit deeper into those cultures. And before we start this, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Whitrock. But if you noticed, at the end of everybody's speech tonight, they talked about a project or a product. And I think that's huge with where we're going with this and we're super excited. I'm going to turn it over.
Yeah. When you hear words like product, you hear words like collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, communication, those are the four Cs of project-based learning, the four Cs of 21st century skills. That was one of the kind of the prerequisites of all these electives was that the teachers had to design them around those four Cs and design them around project-based learning. And so we're really excited to see the end products of all of this very much creative work. To close out our little presentation for today, we have a video. We wanted to bring our whole school book, this obviously. So we brought some students and we actually started our electives today. We were going to start last Wednesday, but a storm called Irma had something else to say about that. And so this is a very, very brief video that's just going to show you how excited our students are and some of the reasons behind their choice of electives and just how excited they are to discover their gifts.
I'm second grader and I chose Drama Club.
Why'd you choose Drama?
Because they're doing a workplace in the year, the trolls play from the movie Trolls.
Well, do you like movie trolls?
I like them to play on a field.
My name's Sophie and I would choose Drama Club. Do you know why? Because I love being a jazz man.
I chose drums because I like to play.
My name's Ed. I'm in the fourth grade. I chose STEM because I like science and I like, you know, being cool.
I'm working on a record. And I'm in fourth grade. I'm doing piano because I like being the piano titles.
Do you like playing the games? Can you show me some of your piano skills?
Um, yeah.
I'm a fifth grader at Orchard Park.
What electives did you pick?
I chose cooking.
Why'd you choose cooking?
Because I love cooking. I love my own time.
That's great. You excited to make food with Ms. Karen?
Yes.
My name's Trudy. I like that. I chose nursing because my dad's a DMS and believe it or not, he did YouTube.
My name's Rodney Watson. I chose theme song because I love making art part of it, beautiful like me.
My name's Bryce.
My name's Grant.
My name's Kim.
And we chose nursing.
The reason I chose nursing because my mom's a nurse.
I chose nursing because I want to learn more about helping.
I chose nursing because my girl, I want to be a queen.
My name is Audrey Goddard. I chose discovering and chance because I like to play the guitar.
Hi, my name is Lauren and I'm in third grade at Orchard Park. And I chose recording because wanting to go to a real live recording studio. I chose recording.
And I'm in fourth grade because I'm going to learn more about basketball.
What I like the best about that video is that there are a lot of stereotypes broken. You had a lot of boys that were looking to become nurses. You had a lot of girls that were interested in STEM. And that's kind of what our whole goal is, is let them discover their gifts, let them go out and see what's going to make them the person that they're looking to grow up. Thank you so much for your time, Moore. We really appreciate it. And teachers, you guys stay up there a little.
And we just have a certificate of appreciation for you four teachers for the hard work. What great examples of the teachers in our district who go over and above what they're required to do, to do what's best for students. So if each of you would come up, Ms. Ass, that's yours first.
Thank you.
We just want to say thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Mrs. Zell, you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your hard work. Join me with a round of applause.
lot of outstanding things going on in all of our schools, but we really want to recognize these that are doing such a great job and just share with us the things that we don't see every day that goes on. So, thank you. Okay, Dr. Thor.
We'll continue with celebrations here. Mr. Ruquette, if you'd come down, please. This South Carolina School Association is in charge for training school board members across our state. And Mr. Ruquette has been a school board member for about 10 months. Ten months now. And he has already reached level two of South Carolina School Board's training. So we're here to recognize Mr. Ruquette for his hard work and I want to thank you for dedicating your time to the students of Oconee County as well.
And that does, I know one of the teachers mentioned going to conferences and people say, oh, y'all get to go to conferences. Well, the state requires that you get in so many hours of training. And there are five, well, there are six levels, you know, that you can progress to, but you have to get through so many training sessions in a certain amount of time in order to move up. So, but good start. Way to go. He'll be a level six one day. Okay. Next is approval of tonight's agenda. If we could get a motion to approve the September 18 regular board meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the agenda for the September 18, 2017 regular board meeting.
We have a motion and second, all in papers. It's unanimous. Next is public comment and I think, same as we have somebody's.
We do. We have one group tonight. Jerry Dyer and Janice Holbrooks will speak to us about the Vietnam Memorial Wall. This will be a group session, so they'll get 10 minutes.
Mr. and Abbot, members of the board, thank you for allowing this opportunity for us to come before you this evening and just say a word or two about an event that's going to be happening in Oconee County on Veterans Day week that we're kind of giddy about in the VA office and all the veterans across Oconee County. But before I mention that, I want just to say a word to the board in appreciation for what you folks do and ask to be done every year around Veterans Day. The 7,500-plus veterans in Oconee County are deeply impressed by the spirit of appreciation that they're shown throughout the schools across the district of Oconee County every year around Veterans Day with breakfast sessions and luncheons and various other types of recognition for our wonderful veterans and the sacrifices that they have offered to make for our country over the years. This coming Veterans Day week is going to be a very special occasion here in Oconee County for the first time in history. And I know, I'm sure some of you folks probably have had the honor of visiting the National Mall in Washington and you've seen the various monuments and memorials to our heroes there. And one such outstanding presentation is the Vietnam Wall. We're going to have the honor of having the replica of the Vietnam Wall displayed here in Oconee County Veterans Day week, November the 9th through the 13th. And it's going to be located on the grounds of the And it's gonna be located on the grounds of the Blue Ridge Electric Cooperative over in Richland at the intersection of highways 123 and 11. And our thanks to Denise and all the folks at the Blue Ridge Electric Co-op for working with us and allowing this production to be displayed at their facility. It's going to be quite an experience. I wanted to mention to you that we would, in concert with the Veterans Day appreciation activities that are conducted at the various schools across the district, I believe this year, since Veterans Day is on Saturday, if I'm correct in assuming this, the schools around the district will be saying thank you to the veterans on Friday, which would be the day before Veterans Day. That's a terrific thing. We, the veterans, the OCVC and the Veterans Affairs Office, would like very much, and I hope I'm not, I don't want to be out of bounds or step where I shouldn't be stepping here, so if what I'm going to say is not appropriate to be done from the school board level down through the schools in the district, I totally understand that, too. Just say, shut up about that, and I won't do it. But I don't think this is not, whether it's appropriate or not, I think it probably will be. We would just simply, and the reason for us being here tonight, is to ask the board to maybe just consider sending out a memo to the schools across the district from elementary up through high school level to encourage their students on this Veterans Day week as we're encouraging all the students across Oconee County in their curriculum to honor veterans on Veterans Day. I know that's something that's espoused by the State Board of Education and the Oconee County School District has been out front in declaring that such observances and recognitions will be held in the district here in Oconee County. But if it's appropriate, we would like the board to maybe endorse this very special project that's being presented here in Oconee County this year to commemorate what the Vietnam veterans have done for our country. This year marks the final year of the observance of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, and we're choosing to conclude this year's commemoration with the presentation of the Vietnam Wall. We started working on this, Janice did, about two years ago, so we could get the Vietnam Wall here on Veterans Day week. That's something that couldn't just arbitrarily be arranged unless we'd started that process a couple of years in advance. So, we did that, and we got the commitment from the wall commemoration committee to bring the Vietnam Wall here to Oconee County that particular week. So, we just, we hope the district will encourage the schools throughout the district to call attention to the Vietnam Wall here that week and as a part of history appreciation and what they do for veterans anyway that week, to go out and visit the Vietnam Wall and get a better understanding maybe of the 55,000-plus names on that wall and what they sacrificed for the freedoms that we enjoy here and also around the world. So, we'd like for you to do that. As I said, Janice has already spoken with Ms. Hopkins here, and I think a terrific gesture on her part, she has arranged, I believe, with all of the fifth grade classes across the district at some point in time on Thursday, I believe, or Friday, I'm not sure which day. But the fifth grade classes are gonna be coming out on field trips and visiting the Vietnam Wall. We don't expect that all school classes across the district could do that, but if we could encourage the students to mention this to mom and dad, and let's go out, because a lot of those mom and dads are Vietnam and Vietnam-era veterans, you know, and everything. So, we're just trying to get the word out about the Vietnam Wall being here on Veterans Day week and also to thank you again for your encouragement of our schools to salute our veterans on Veterans Day, which you've done in the past, and the veterans enjoy the great breakfast sessions and that sort of thing. So, I'm gonna ask Ms. Janice to pass out one of these. These are being displayed all over the county. I want to ask, this is gonna be your personal invitation to come and visit the Vietnam Wall sometime between the 9th and the 13th down at Blue Ridge Co-op. And thank you again for allowing us to be here and make this special presentation this evening. We appreciate you folks and what you all do for the education structure and enhancement here in Oconee County. That's, believe me, I can speak from a little bit of personal experience, sitting up there where you ladies and gentlemen sit is not a, sometimes not a picnic. I sat up there for about four years with Buddy Herring and Mr. Inabit, I believe, and maybe Jerry Lee. So, I know, I know what you go through sometime, and I admire you for your service on this board. Thank you again for letting us be here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry, for being with us. And just, just so you know, we will be happy to distribute this to all students in the school district and not only encourage them to attend, but try to do a little education ahead of time on what they're going to see and kind of how to act while you're there and that kind of thing. So, we appreciate what you're doing to bring that to our county.
Thank you, Dr. Thorson. Appreciate that.
Any others, Ms. Sanders?
No, so that's all.
Okay. Next, on the agenda's approval of minutes, Exhibit 1, if we can get a motion to approve the minute of July 17 and August 14 work sessions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve July 17, 2017 work session and August 14, 2017 work session.
Second. Motion and second, all in paper. That's unanimous. Then Division reports.
Dr. Thorson. I just wanted to kind of share a little bit about the beginning of the school year. It's been quite an interesting beginning to the school year, a little bit unusual in that we changed a couple of schedules with the staggered start times and the high schools transitioning to a four-by-four. And then, we had the eclipse. We've got Chromebooks in our schools now. Ms. Sanders and Ms. Gibson have pulled some pictures together, so those are gonna kind of scroll while I'm talking. But the eclipse was just a wonderful experience for our students. Of course, we gave families the option of keeping their children at home if they wanted to, but then the students who were at school, you can see there's West Oak Middle, just had wonderful opportunities with that, really once-in-a-lifetime activity. And I've heard several people comment on anyone who was anywhere viewing the eclipse. They've never, not heard anybody say, well, it wasn't that special. Everybody was just overwhelmed at how beautiful it was, and that was a good event for us. And then, of course, as Mr. Whitrock referenced just a few minutes ago, we had the weather issue already. It's very common for us to miss school days in December, January, February. It's very uncommon to miss school days in September, but we did. And I wanted to share that we've already got those rescheduled on our makeup days that we build into the calendar. We had one unusual occurrence beyond that in that we had two schools without power a day after we called school. I have a feeling we've got some Wahala Middle School students in the audience, and they're probably not gonna like hearing this, but they're gonna go to school on October 23rd, which was an in-service day. So, we're gonna call school that day for Wahala Middle School and Oconee Academy, the two schools that were without power. So, I'm sorry, I'm an unpopular superintendent right now with some young people in our audience. But of course, we'll, any family that had plans that day based on our student calendar will excuse their students that day. But we do want to make that day up, and we're gonna be announcing that later this week. And then, just a couple of things that are coming up for your information. We have the Considerate Cafe opening this Friday. Of course, that's our star students at the Hamilton Career Center. So, that cafe opens up this Friday, so encourage you and anybody else who's listening to go have lunch at the Career Center. Next week, we have the Anderson-Oconee Pickens Business and Industry Showcase at the Anderson Civic Center, and I'll send you some more information about that. But all of our eighth grade students go there and learn about business and industry in the tri-county area. So, that's a good annual event for us. And then, finally, we've got Farm Oconee, which is used to be called Steak in Oconee. A lot of our high school agriculture students take part in that event and kind of help sponsor that with the Oconee County Chamber of Commerce. So, those are things coming up. But it's been a busy and unusual start to the school year, but we do have students in schools, and they're learning and doing a good job, so just want to give you a kind of a quick.
Schedules are working okay with the delayed starts and running.
It's taking some adjustment for, you know, all of us to get used to it, but I do think, we hope to possibly by the October board meeting, have a report to you on the results of the staggered start. Of course, our motivation was trying to shorten ride time for our students on buses. And we're hoping to have a report to you that shows exactly how many minutes, on average, we were able to reduce the ride time and give you some information on that. And, you know, the four-by-four schedule's gonna take a little bit longer to really understand if it's improved things in our high schools or if it, you know, just what kind of effect it's had. But we'll certainly report on that as we continue in the process this year.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Hamby.
Okay, well, we'll start with the financial report and typical end of the year, you know, in the month, too, really, of the bill paying and the financial report. So, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer those.
The Encore Tech voicemail upgrade, was that really a voicemail upgrade or was that the whole system? Do you know that off the top of your head?
The whole, are you asking if it was the whole telephone system?
Yeah, in other words, it was an update on this actual server or just the voicemail?
I can't answer that. I'll have to ask Josh and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
But I will do that.
I've heard about Front Row. Give me a little more information on that, Ginger, if you would.
Front Row is a piece of software that some of our schools used last year, actually Orchard Park used it a little bit and Senate Ravanel. It is software for elementary students in the way we're using it, and it comes in four different content areas. Our folks are using the ELA and the math, and just a couple are using some social studies services.
Does it give them examples or what does it give them?
Well, it actually is, it's an adaptive curriculum software, so it's a little unusual as far as that goes. We have a good number of software programs, as you know, that will provide students with some practice. What this does, though, is it's actually aligned, when the company designed it, they aligned it to the NWEA Learning Continuum. So, with the RIT bands that are in the Learning Continuum, this is instructional practice for students to function at that cognitive area. But when the student is struggling with a skill, it will, the program will automatically take the student to that skill, even if it's a lower-level skill, and teach the student that skill and then bring them back to the cognitive level that they're functioning. So, let me give you an example. Let's say that they're working in math, and maybe they're working on an algebraic concept or maybe something in fractions. And that's cognitively where they should be able to function, but perhaps they never really mastered the idea of subtraction with borrowing. And so, the computer will diagnose the errors that they're making in the area that they're supposed to be working cognitively, find out that that's the skill that's keeping them from getting the right answer, take them back to a lower level, a lower-level skill, work on that skill, teach them that skill, and then it moves them back into the level that they can cognitively function. So, that's what I mean by adaptive curriculum. So, it's got a really good diagnostic part to it. Pretty expensive. What we've done at the district level, though, is really facilitate the purchase and negotiate a much better rate. So, we're learning to do that. When the schools are purchasing these kinds of software on their own, it would cost them a good bit more, but when we, when we do that at the district level on their behalf, we can usually get some very good discounts. We did in this case. I think we're getting about a $5 to $6 off per student license for purchasing at the district level.
And that was...
It's like a Johnston's Learning, wasn't it?
Except that it's got that diagnostic adaptive piece, but a lot of the instructional parts are gonna be like that, yeah.
It was difficult for the district office to provide support on these different software programs when our 10 elementary schools were doing 10 different things. So, we asked the schools to get together and come up with one that they could all agree on that would be useful for their students. And then, it became, it makes it a little bit easier for the district to support the learning in the schools, you know, the digital learning in the schools when we can narrow it down to one or two programs rather than having.
And Mr. Ruquette probably appreciates it as well as anybody. One of the things, too, that I would add, Mr. Ruquette, is that we do have a program evaluation going on with that software. In one of the schools, they're using Front Row for half of the students and MobiMax for the other half. And Mr. Bibb, Dr. Bibb, and Ms. Smith are doing an evaluation on that, so we want to see what the impact is. We're also looking at a number of programs to just really see. It's hard to do a pure evaluation of a product because so many factors can play into it, but we are trying to do some more program evaluation in the kinds of initiatives that we're supporting.
Okay. I didn't mean to. Appreciate all that. What is Yellow Folder?
Yellow Folder is the software, it's a company that we are working with that scanned all of the records, the special education records that were formerly in the basement.
Okay.
And so, we do have the annual licensing fee for that. As those records are no longer needing to be retained in about five years when they run past their life expectancy, then we won't need to continue to pay that annual licensing fee for that. But for now, there is an annual fee for that.
One question, why are we showing a number here, Dillard Sporting Goods, or just a couple of individual schools? Is that, should that not be in their schools? What is this?
It is in their school. It is from their people activity, yes.
Okay, but it's showing here. Do we do that for all of them?
We do. We write all the checks, yes.
Just a couple. And there's one I didn't know, Heinemann.
That's for the LLI kits that you heard Mr. Whitrock talk about. And so, we have purchased LLI kits, the Fountas and Pinnell LLI kits, for all of the schools. And then, out of the, if you recall, the IDEA settlement money, we have recently purchased LLI kits for all of the special education classrooms, K through 12. And so, that's, that's that money there.
Okay, one more thing. The Teltec systems, there's three checks?
Yes, they are.
And you're gonna get 80% back on that?
Yes, we will.
Okay, got it. Check what Scott wore today. So, in other words, there's some significant amounts of money that I just want to make certain, from E-rate, where it says Teltec, that's eratable. That's where your access points are.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay. And speaking of, Mr. Or, he is here and is going to go with the information about the sole source and registered contracts that you had in your packet. Unfortunately, that's a small list. Yes. And as Joe was asking just a moment ago on E-rate, I just got the notification just this afternoon that they've already are reimbursing us the 80% on those three. So, we should get that money very soon. As far as the sole source and the emergency contracts, the first one, Smith Addressing, you've seen a number of times, and I'm glad to say this is the last time you're gonna see it. It was for supplies needed at one of our schools for their labeling and ID machine, but unfortunately, that machine tore up and they had to replace it with a different source that does not require sole source PO anymore. Project Lead the Way, however, is one you're going to be seeing from this point forward. The district's moved forward with that initiative, and we have the teachers that are certified to instruct that, but they also have to have Project Lead the Way kits in those classrooms, and they are only available from Project Lead the Way. Now, fortunately, you don't have to buy new kits every year, but we do have to resupply what's in them. So, that's what you'll be seeing from this point forward. Carolina Parks and Play is for actually a slide, $3,000 for a slide. That was unusual and very hard to believe, but if you looked at the cost of the play units themselves in their entirety, they're quite expensive. This was a piece that was 20 years old, and we do have a certified playground specialist that inspects our equipment. And just from use and weathering, it was cracked and deemed unsafe. The bad thing that we found out is you can only replace that item with an identical item. And this particular company only has one approved vendor per region. So, we had to sole source through Carolina Parks and Play. That was it for the sole source. Now, the emergency, and we've taken steps where you won't see that again either, but we have... we have certain procurement rules that you have to follow when you're putting a project out for bid. And we have a great company that does anything related to our abatement. And they estimate it, problem was they estimated it a little low this time. So when the bids came in, it was a different set of procurement rules that would need to follow. So this project would have to rebid out again. However, if you remember the summer before last, that was phase one of the HVAC. They were Holla Elementary and it was going to be a push to get it done during the summer. Well, these bids came in Thursday afternoon about 2:30 and the project had to be started Monday morning. So we had to award it quick and we didn't have time to rebid it. We had the bids in hand, so we did select the lowest bid and awarded it under the emergency PO. But to take a future step where this won't happen again, usually on the abatement side, that's such a specialized field that this company, they put the bid together, they know all the vendors, they put it out and we are involved with the meetings. The rule that this went to was it also needed to be advertised as well as to the bidders. And that's, that was the one thing we didn't have done. So from this point forward, they will always notify me and I will advertise every project in the paper and that will cover us up to $50,000. And we'll never have to have an emergency PO for abatement related projects.
Any questions, Scott?
I'd love to just kind of tell the Boy Scouts what we're dealing with here. These are companies that the school district hires and to make sure that we don't do anything illegal, like let's pretend that my brother or sister owned a company and I called them and said, hey, I need the school district, the school district needs you to do some work for that. By us having to get bids, we have to get multiple companies to submit bids to make sure there's no unethical or illegal type of business deal that the school district does with another business. So Mr. Orr, part of his job is to make sure that we follow all the rules, all of our employees, so that we're giving other businesses a fair chance to earn business because we deal with public money. We deal with money that is taken from taxpayers. So we have to make sure we're doing everything on the up and up. And Mr. Orr, you know, the, the big part of his job is making sure that we're doing that. So that's what he's reporting on tonight.
And he does a good job. He makes sure that we follow the rules we're supposed to follow.
He does.
He talks to a lot of people and sometimes he's got to go out and ask people to, to bid. He makes sure we do it the way we're supposed to and we appreciate him for doing that.
Thanks.
Any questions about that?
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing for us is it's some property matter. Years ago, actually in 1967, the people who sat in this seat up here decided that there was some land that they wanted to give to the Neville Community Club. And so that was done through the legal process. Well, the Neville Community Club has decided that maybe it's time they look at selling that and doing something different. So they asked about it and in the agreement it says that the right of first refusal lets you guys go.
Yo, thank you.
Thank you for coming, guys. You need to sit right there. Stay along. Thank you. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming in.
See you.
Must have to get an hour in. Did a nice job persevering. So basically we have, the, the district has, they have to offer us the, the property back first, per the agreement. I'm hoping that y'all are not interested in that property because we, we don't need to take that on. So what I would like for you guys to allow Dr. Thorson to, we, we actually, Scott helped me find this sort of document we created and it would say that we're not interested in, in repurchasing it or getting it back and they can do with it what they need. I'm asking that in the action items, you give Dr. Thorson the authority to sign that so I can turn it over to Mr. Jim McCall who heads that group up and let them do with it what they need to do.
Any questions about that?
Included all the tax information.
I was looking to see if there are any current board members on this team, but they weren't.
No, you haven't. It was superintendent back then, Mr. Fred Hamilton.
And we do have this on the agenda later for you to take action if you don't mind.
They'd like to move forward as quickly as possible. There are no questions about that. And I just had a couple, wanted to do, I was asked about a couple of updates, so I wanted to, to give you a little update. Construction, obviously we were able to get everything done and get into the facilities at Wahala Elementary and the athletic facility at West Oak. And I hope you've had a chance to, to visit that. And we continue to work at West Oak, we continue to work on the greenhouse and the ag mechanic shop, those coming along on well. We also are obviously working on the auxiliary gym, which will have some storage in, office area concession stand, new training room, restrooms, et cetera. The timeline for, for that, we've been optimistic, but we're hoping somewhere around December 1st is our goal that will get us in during basketball and wrestling season. That's really when they need it so they can have it, have it for that. We can't guarantee that, but that, that's what we're pushing for at Wahala Elementary. We're a little bit slower because we had to spend so much time and energy on getting the inside of the current building ready to start school and do that. So it's not anybody's fault. It was just the nature of the project. We did it in phases and the most important phase this summer was to finish up the inside of the building. So we are working on, Jay Davis is working on the addition of the gym there. We expect that one to probably be around the first part of February. Then we would move the PE classes into that facility and then we would do phase four, which would be taking the current gym slash multipurpose room and converting it into, to classrooms, which we can't do while the PE needs to use it. So it's sort of, everything's dependent upon other things getting finished. Both projects are looking good budget wise. At this time, we had a, had a meeting on the West Oak project last week to look at the budget. We have a meeting next week on the, the Wahala Elementary project where we feel comfortable that we'll be within the budget. On a note about the Wahala Elementary project, we will be working, probably end of the month, we'll start with the widening of the road there, getting that third lane, that turning lane in. Jay Davis has secured a group for that and we've, we've got to get some paperwork done, some easements and, and those kind of things done. But that'll take about six to eight weeks. They will not be doing that work during the morning. They will start till 8:30 and they'll stop from 2:15 to, or actually Ms. Lusk has stopped from 2:00 to 3:15 while school traffic is, is there. So they will work around that and then on, on weekends. We met with the property owners that need to be updated on that and we feel very comfortable what's going on there. The other one that is, has started for Tri County Tech is the joint venture out at the industrial technology park. If you're right by it on Highway 11 now, you'll see the steel going up and that is part of the Tri County Tech facility. We won't start our park till July of next year. We're in the, continuing in the pre-design phase, working with the architects and with Mr. Lusk and those down at the Career Center, getting some feedback from the staff right now to see how we can make it as user friendly as possible and as functional as, as possible for them. So hard thing with the Career Center is, you know, you don't know what the, what's going to be happening five or 10 years down the road. You got to make it where it can be adaptable. So we're working on those. Those are our big construction projects. Obviously we have smaller things going on that we continue to work on, but those are our main projects now. Any questions about those?
Steve, just a comment. I have been to the facilities there at West Oak, really, really nice and makes so much difference. And when you go to the game and you have to get up and go get a Coke or something, you're not, you're not so crowded in there. It's really nice. They finished the track, they got the track lined and it's really nice as well.
Look forward to having some home track mix over there and...
Real nice complex there now.
It's outstanding. I, I agree 100%. They've worked hard to, to get it ready and it, it looks good and it's, it is very functional as well. You come in, you've got that nice open area.
And I think the gym area is going to be equally as nice when they finish it. It, it's done very, very well.
They're putting the bleachers in, actually they're putting the bleachers in the current gym. They started, they start tomorrow, they deliver it, they start tomorrow. So those, those will be going in. Remember we talked about the athletic department and the administration asked for, instead of getting new bleachers in the football stadium, they asked to trade that out for new bleachers in the gym, no, gym.
I haven't been in the auditorium, but I'm sure...
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Really, really nice.
Top notch.
Enjoying there.
We're finishing up, putting up the sound panels and things, acoustical panels and that, but sound system, the, just, it, it looks like a brand new auditorium. It's unbelievable. So, sure good.
The construction window for the Career Center? What time are we planning on having kids move in?
August of 20.
August of 20?
And it's a, it's a, it's a funding thing really. We couldn't, I mean, I don't know the trail we'd want to do any faster. We couldn't, we couldn't go any faster because of our, our funding. You know, we're going to do adult ed out there, we're going to do the Career Center and we have a budgeted amount that we have planned out over the next three years to, to do that.
Thank you.
But I guess August of 2020 is the target date for, for right now. And then just a quick technology update. As we mentioned before, you saw the, the checks and Scott mentioned the E-rate and that, we're down to three elementary, our, three of our small elementary schools to finish up, Orchard Park actually, Kiwi and Tomasi Salem. Tomasi Salem's in pretty good shape actually because they had a lot of access points from that, the projects they did with the folks from the Cliffs and, and that. So it's not that any of them are in bad shape, they're just not to where the rest of the schools are with the individual access point units in each classroom and such. So that, we were told those will be finished by next Friday on that. The Chromebooks going well. We had one that got run over by a car. I have a picture of it on, on there. Let, set it up on the car and they, they drove off and the car behind them got it. So Josh has that one up on his, his shelf up there. We've, we've had about 10 screens that have been cracked and we actually have, I guess I can talk about this, we have one that is, was stolen in Tennessee. It was a teacher when they were at a conference, it was stolen Tennessee. But Josh has the, the, this software that we, we track them. So we've been working with the Memphis police and they actually know the, the guy, they actually know who has it and where it is and they're asking us to, to hold, give them a couple of days because they think he's involved in some other stuff that's a little more serious and they want this to be part of that whole, whole deal. It's pretty entertaining when you see Josh is on there, Mr. Shepherd and our department, he's on there able to, to track it, see where it's at and, you know, see what the guy logs in to see and he's checking his Facebook page out and, you know, doing all that stuff. And so he just sent that, those screenshots and stuff to the Memphis police and we'll, we'll, we'll work on their timetable, but they'll, we expect to get that one back in the next week or so.
Memphis police made the comment that, that that fell up there messed with the wrong person because Josh could tell them everything they wanted to know about this guy.
That's kind of how they figured out that they, they're like, we, we think, will you give us just a couple more days because we think that there may be some, some other stuff involved in, in this too. So we're like, yeah, whatever you need.
He can let him, let him go ahead and post some stuff.
It's not funny, but it's kind of funny. So, so that will hopefully discourage people from stealing it because once you turn it on, he can, and we can, we can figure out.
Too bad the press is not here. That'd make a good story in the press.
Yeah, it'll paint for him and he can, you know, he can see, see that. And sure good, I did, I just, you send me texts, I'm, I'm trying to work and multitask, not ignore the folks. But it, it was, it's, it's for 649 user license and upgrades. That, that was for the invoice you, you saw that we, we had that you questioned, the Cisco. 649 voice users and then the phone renewals. So that was, that was what that...
I think everything, on the technology side, your map testing, I think this is probably, from what I've heard so far, it's about the best you've had. In other words, you have your one-to-ones and you've got your access points and you've got the kids using them all at the same time and you don't have to...
Doesn't have to drag on.
Shut anything down to give them a better bandwidth. So I think that perfect timing, you know, so appreciate what you all have done there.
We think it's going well. It's a collaborative effort with the folks over in instruction and we feel like it's going, going well with that and get that one-to-one out there. And I see some great stuff coming out. You know, a lot of the teachers, they, they put pictures on Twitter and the kids talk, the kids talk about it, the, you know, they're, they're excited as well. We hope we can continue to, to expand that program. That's going to be the key.
Well, speaking of expanding, I was with Mr. Dixon this morning and, and he only has it for his sixth grade students and he would like to have the one-to-one for, for the rest of his school.
He's the only middle school that has it for a sixth grader.
And he felt he needed to share that with you, okay, so...
He shares it with us on a regular basis.
Well, I just wanted to make sure you got the information.
We, we, we love hearing it from you too.
We did put 450 computers, Chromebooks into the middle school, so at the beginning.
To help with their science, with their science.
Once more.
Right, yeah, that's right. Always.
We're working on it.
Just wanted to share that with you.
But I think that is it from our department unless you, you all have questions about any of that.
I have questions. Okay, Ms. Dixon?
I have a policy to put before you and it's really complicated. Actually, it's not, I'm going to let Mrs. Williams really talk about it, but she's got a policy that's going to change some language and that will deal with the background checks. So the policy for, that I have for you from instruction is the field trip policy and it really is just changing the language from criminal record language to background check language. And Mrs. Williams will explain why when we get to her on the agenda. It also updates the reference. Any questions on the policy? And then I want to also let you know where we're at with the Department of Mental Health counselors. And so we are excited to let you know that we have two that are beginning to work with us, Wahala High School. These are the, the two new ones that we, we have contracted with the Department of Mental Health to provide. You recall that we have had some folks leave us since with that, that gave us the opportunity to work with the department. This is a good partnership, I think, that we've got going on. So the Wahala area has a counselor that started working with our students. The West Oak area has a young lady that we interviewed virtually Friday right before.
About two weeks ago, yeah.
Yeah, right before Labor Day. And so we'll be moving here from California to be working with our, our students and I may even be here by now. We'll have a little bit of onboarding, training and that sort of thing with the department and then we'll start working with our students. So at this time, we do not have somebody working with the Wahala Middle and High School from the Department of Mental Health. What we've done though is...
Seneca.
I'm sorry, Seneca area, thank you for the correction. We have the mental health counselor, that is one of our mental health counselors that works out at O'Conie Academy and we've made arrangements for her to also be supporting the Seneca area right now. We, we clearly have some students that have some needs and I met with the counselors at Seneca High School, have had communications with them.
The elementary needs them too.
But the elementary has them. Elementary is where our counselors are, so yes.
Taking care of them.
Yes. And if you recall, the Department of Mental Health agreement requires us to only have the counselor between two buildings and to make sure that they have a certain number of students to work with. So having our counselors work with the elementary folks means that we can cover all of the elementary schools well. We've got them set up on a, a pretty consistent schedule now. They're working well. I think that I'll be meeting with them tomorrow, so I'll get a little bit of an update from them. But bottom line is, we still have one Department of Mental Health counselor outstanding, but I, I'm really pleased that they are not just trying to put bodies in there, they're really looking for good quality folks that are going to work well with our students. I think we've had a good experience so far.
I would echo that. So just to kind of wrap it up, we, we had seven that were our employees, three left in the last six months. So we had four. Those four, one is covering elementary schools in Seneca, one's covering elementary in West Oak, one's covering elementary in Wahala, and we have one at O'Conie Academy. That's, that's the four that are our employees. We made the decision to contract with the Department of Mental Health for three additional that would cover a middle school, high school in each area. We had the one candidate first who was coming from California and I didn't... We had the one candidate first who was coming from California, and I didn't know how to pick which attendance area, but the Department of Mental Health solved that for us because they said that they had seen a spike in need in the West Oak area. So they wanted this person from California to specifically be a candidate for the West Oak area. They felt like that was the most critical position at the, at the point, two or three weeks ago. So that went well. Both Mr. Cruzberger and Dr. Blackwell felt good about that person, so that person's hired. Since then, someone within the Department of Mental Health that was already working for them expressed an interest in working in the Wahala schools, and that was a specific request because of, I think, children maybe working that attend in that area. So they've done that, and now we're just waiting to get that Seneca area person, and we'll be fully staffed again.
Will you be periodically checking with the principals to make certain that if their needs increase, we try to address?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good, thank you.
And believe me, they let me know.
Good.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Williams.
Okay.
You explained why it's different than criminal record.
Well, one reason is, we, we will still continue to do a sled check, but a sled check will pretty much check you maybe locally where you are. But for example, if I've lived in another state, if I've lived in New York, I've lived in California, we do a background check to check where people are from and what they may have done in other states as well. So if something else comes up, we, we are aware of that. So we do, do sled checks, but the sled check doesn't gather all the data from all the places where they may have lived. And so that's why it's, it's being changed from the word sled to a background check.
So who's doing the check?
We, we contract with Chapman.
Contract?
Yes, and, and they will do those checks for us. And usually on that, once, once they're hired and we do an application, we ask, where have you lived? And they list all the places where they go, and then we will send that information, and we'll have someone, it may take a while before that information comes back, but we do have that information. For example, recommendations tonight, we've already completed those background checks, so they're not an issue that we're making a recommendation that you hire someone, that we may be waiting for a background check from New York or California or Texas or somewhere.
And just referencing back to the, the policy Ms. Hopkins was talking about, field trips, we do the same thing now. We contract with, it's a different company, I don't think it's Chapman, but it's a different company, that our field trip chaperones have to submit their information for a background check that's thorough, multiple states. It's not just a, a South Carolina sled check.
It's the, it's, what the initial stamp over is.
But it's a more complete background check. So we're going from a very specific term to a more general term because we're doing a more general search now, not just a state of South Carolina search.
And, you know, it's just to make sure we have the right people working with our kids. I mean, somebody could have been great in an interview but may have some history somewhere else, and we just want to check and make sure that they're going to say.
Let's turn around.
Um, it's, it's, it's fairly quick, within a week or so. We just have to mail it off as opposed to, sled is, you put it in and it pops up right then. But just with the snail mail, pretty much, we're doing that with Chapman. But it's okay for us to wait to make sure that we get the right person.
The ones we do through the chaperones and things, you do all online, so you can get those back in up to 48 hours, it's not always guaranteed. So we ask the people who wait till the last minute or found out they could chaperon and that, but, and they get a card with it and, and that, that shows that they're, they've been cleared through that. That goes through Ms. Hughes in, in our office, and then we keep a database that only the principal and one other person in the school can access to see who's on there.
It's a much improved system over what we used to do.
Good. That could also be inexpensive.
It's actually cheaper.
Is it really cheap? I was, I was afraid, I was thinking it was going to be more expensive.
Cheaper than a sled check. It's 1995, or 1999 or 95, and the majority of the time, the parents are doing it and paying for it themselves, they enter their card information there. We, we only do it on an as-needed.
And don't even have to come to the school, you just, it's all online now, so the parent can do it from their home, their card's mailed to them, and they can show up at the school, here's my card, I'm approved.
And, but this, end of every day, Ms. Hughes goes on there and she gets a, an updated list of ones, and if there's anything questionable at all, you know, because somebody might have 25 years ago written a bad check, and we're not going to hold that against them forever, but they, if there's anybody questionable, they put it on an approved list for her to, to look at, and either we'll come talk to the leadership team, or Dr. Thorson, or myself, whoever, and we'll, we'll look at it, and then we can make an informed decision as a group if there's a question.
And you said they're good for a year, so does anything, or two years?
Two is what we, we.
If they get in trouble during that time.
Yeah, that's, that's the hard part for us, is, is that. We, one good thing is, you know, in a smaller place, a lot of people will tell you, and you, it's, kids in the school know, the teachers at the school know, somebody at the school knows, but that is a, an issue that we have, and we went from three, it used to be three years that we would allow them, and when that stuff happened in Greenville where the person had something and got on that overnight field trip, we reevaluated and went to, to every two years on the database. But, yeah, that's the, that's the hard part for us, is that, question of that, but we.
Well, we will have people call us and say, you know, so-and-so was arrested.
Right, yeah. And if they got their chaperones, their spot on the trip, they're going to say, you know.
He was arrested last night, so, so we call them and get them in. Well, next, Dr. Lucas has been working in Human Resources, as you know, a familiar face.
I thought he was just here to.
No, my boss required me to be here.
And he's had a long day, he's been out observing teachers today, and so he's wore out.
That's right.
Okay, Ms. Williams, when I came to work, she and Dr. Thorson, I came and worked one day, and they sent me out for three days of training in Pickens County. I was just so glad it was in Pickens County, it wasn't so far away. But everything that's old comes back again. Mr. Navidah, Mr. Ruket, you all know the very first observation instrument the state of South Carolina had was called APT, and there were 51 things you were required to do within a lesson. And you had to go through a training session to kind of prove that you understood what the categories were. Well, I went through that training. Ms. Williams has actually gone through the next training, so she can be a trainer, but when I came back, I was a little concerned. I taught with Ms. Williams. The state of South Carolina assumes that a teacher is proficient. They rate them, if you'll roll down, just, yeah. They have four categories that are there, and I have at your place a sheet like this, and those domains are instruction, environment, planning, and professionalism. It's really the same stuff, it's just been, has been repackaged. The way we do things now is very different. For instance, with APT, technology might have been an overhead projector. Today, it's a Chromebook, so the, the way we do things is very different, but what we do is pretty much the same. If you go down another one, the state has actually used a national organization, you may have heard of TAP, but TAP was the Teacher Performance Pay Group, and what they did is they looked at all the research and they found those qualities that stood out, out about effective teachers. And so then they took those, they came up with domains, those four domains, then they eventually developed within that, you can see things with, there are 12 things under instruction, and they came up with descriptors of those. So it kind of boils it down as to what a teacher should be doing. And the state assumes that a teacher is proficient, and they describe what that is, and then you sit and you watch the videos to see what a proficient teacher should be like in the state of South Carolina. The problem is, we don't want proficient teachers in O'Conne County, we want an exemplary teacher. And so I had a question when I came back, Ms. Williams, what does it look like when we're looking at these things? What does it look like when a teacher does that? So I took the materials the state had, and I tried to put it in a format that principals could share with teachers. This is what you do to be an exemplary teacher. And if you roll down just a little bit further, keep going, and click where it says the PowerPoints up at the very top. I developed PowerPoint files that actually takes the information from the state and says, this is what a teacher looks like who is doing the exemplary job. So if you look at this, you don't have to go through the PowerPoints, there are loads of them, but the, the point is, I tried to then identify those things that were critical elements of a teacher. For instance, if you go to the next page, and if you look under instruction, it might be the third page, I'm not sure how it printed on yours, but if you look at the critical elements under motivating students, the second category, it says content is organized by the teacher to be personally meaningful, relevant, and intellectually engaging to students. I tried to kind of show teachers in those PowerPoint files what that meant, and then I tried to condense it down into this template that you see, so that ten, principals kind of remember what those areas were. The state has not finalized anything yet. There is no observation instrument. This is one we kind of developed to share with principals, so that when they go in and script lessons, because they want to go back to the old days of PET, y'all remember PET? In PET, you scripted the teacher's lesson, then you analyzed it. So this is kind of a combination of APT and PET, and the whole point is, they want the principal or whoever's doing the observation to be a coach of the teacher to improve practice. So that's where we are in South Carolina. This goes into effect next year, and our induction teachers are, are learning about it this year, the first-year teachers, and then, of course, it'll eventually go live with all teachers after next year. So a lot of change is coming, but it's not necessarily new things, it's just the way it's packaged. Any questions for me? But you can see, this took everything from conferencing. What the state wants the principal to do now is to come up with, and if you flip over to the last page, they want them, once they've looked at the lesson, analyzed it, to sit down with a teacher and talk about a reinforcement area. What's something the teacher did well? Talk about it, and then continue to work on that area. And then what's something that a teacher did not do well? That's a refinement area. So that's how a principal is supposed to, or an assistant principal, or a department head is supposed to sit there and work with teachers. But this is the next step that's coming.
We had some, I had some teachers when I was a coach that went through a, a coaching training.
Cognitive coaching.
And, and it was an excellent program, and it did what they're asking.
Well, can I give you my bias?
I don't think principals have that much time to go in and sit down and do the detail that these people would have to do. They weren't supposed to be evaluators, they were to coach.
That's a good model, and, and I'll tell you, the state has mixed the metaphor, because what happens is, if you're a coach, you're working with the teacher to get better. In a game, the coach works with the kid. The umpire and the referees are the ones who actually decide if something was done correctly. What they're trying to do is get the coach to also be the evaluator, and in my opinion, there are some, some dangerous kind of areas with that, but the state is, has decided that's the way they want to go. But it is kind of a, interesting.
Not a lot of them, it's sort of like having peer teachers evaluate. I never got a, I say never, I did get some, a few, but rarely do you ever have peer teachers get poor evaluations. And, and even if they came from another school in the same district, they generally.
Well, the point of, of doing this was to help our principals and assistant principals and others who are going to do it understand what an exemplar is, and they are looking for that as a, as opposed to a proficient. I'll be honest, I was real disappointed when I saw what the state said was proficient. I didn't think it was proficient, but I understand what they're doing, and that they're trying to say there is a level of performance, but I can tell you, you would not be satisfied, Mr. Navidah, if teachers were only at that level. We want them at that top-notch, so that kids get the very best. Any questions for me? I'm enjoying it, so thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
One of the things, too, about the model that's different now is that currently with the safety model, we only give teacher feedback at Plymouth, which is in December. This model does allow for immediate feedback. So you think about, you've got a teacher, a marginal teacher in a classroom, and the team that's evaluating them will not give them feedback until December, so you've got all this time where this teacher's troubling with some things. So now, at least, they do get some immediate feedback to work on those concerns. Okay, and my next report, a lot of this I'll, I'll share with you in executive session, but just wanted to make you aware of, as you know, the teacher shortage concerns that we've shared each year. We're seeing a bigger shortage now, more and more with special ed teachers. We, we do hear, I've spent the last few weeks talking with some special ed teachers about concerns about paperwork and things like that. So we're not seeing a lot of teachers go into special ed at the college level, you know, they may choose to teach, but it may not be special ed. And then, should you say, well, would you like to add certification? I don't know if I want to do that, and the thing that they say is paperwork.
You'll put me in it, too.
So I, I have a report that really just kind of goes through the data as far as, from the last five years going back to 2013, 14, we had to hire 12 special ed teachers. 14, 15, it was 18. 15, 16, 13, and 16, 17, last year, 14. With, starting the school year last year, we had two vacancies. This year, we've started the year hiring 14 teachers, but we currently have three vacancies. So it is hard, and then when those teachers are out for any reasons, should there be a medical leave, if they're out on maternity leave or some illness or whatever, it's even hard to replace them if they're out on a leave of absence for an extended time. We're not able to find a certified special ed teacher to fill in for them as well, and right now, we have three teachers that are out on a leave of absence, and the subs that are filling in are not certified, you know, in special ed. They're certified, but they're not certified in special ed. And so, you know, legally, we look at owing them compensatory time, what are we doing to make sure that we are getting the best teachers? There's some things that we would like to suggest as far as, of course, you've always allowed us to do early contracts, but looking at our at-will employees, some are saying, yes, I will work, but I'm not going to come out and do this for 80%, so that was a concern. We also had teachers that are now having to take up the paperwork, the IEP, for those teachers that are not certified, which cannot do the IEP. So there, there are lots of things that we're, we're looking at and addressing their concerns. We've talked about paying them, I've taught with neighboring districts, and they're having the same concerns, but they've also looked at offering a stipend as far as $100 per IEP for those teachers that are stepping in to hold those meetings and those annual reviews.
Look at that.
Well, and, and I just want, I want to be wide open, so we're not, you know, hiding salaries or anything like that. One thing we've discussed the last two weeks in our leadership meeting is that we would like to start just with special ed, and it's not because special ed teachers are more valuable or, or necessarily work harder than our other teachers, but there's, there's a shortage of special ed teachers. So we would like to start paying at-will special ed teachers at 100%. We feel like that will help retain.
We feel like that will help retain. Ms. Williams told you we have three vacancies right now. What she did tell you is, we've got, how many teachers this year that-
And you said-
Retired, that finished the Terry program.
Yes, and that is something else there.
We've got a couple even during the school year that would finish the Terry program. And if they weren't willing to come back, we could be in that much more of a difficult situation. So we would like to start paying special ed teachers who are willing to come back as retirees at 100% just because there's such a shortage.
We are able to negotiate with any at-will employee.
We are, but we would, we don't think it would be fair to tell one special ed teacher, well, we'll pay you 100%.
Oh, no, no.
And then we have another one who's not. So we would like to just say for special ed teachers right now, and again, the reasoning is because we have vacancies there and shortages there. In early childhood, we don't have that. If we had a vacancy in early childhood, we would be able to fill that job with another qualified candidate. We can't say that in special ed.
And it may come to other areas of special ed in the future too.
It may, but we did want to just publicly share with you our rationale for wanting to do that for special ed teachers.
Because we do have some teachers that we have hired that are seeking, they're certified, maybe elementary, but they're seeking certification via an alternative certification, which is allowable by the state, such as Project Create. And so they are in the process of taking their coursework and all of those things. So it has been a way of saying, these are some things that we will do for special ed teachers to help you as you continue to work on your certification and hopefully to get other folks to join that program. Because even a classified A could go through that program and get certified. And there have been several As that we've hired that's gone through alternative certification and are now working as a special ed teacher.
Any questions, Ms. Williams? Anything else?
Now, we will, like I said, I'll give you the more general, which has confidential names on it in executive session.
Okay, well, let's look at the bottom action items then. We need, and this is first reading. We can do these two together because they certainly are related. Policy GBEBDA, Criminal Record Checks, and policy IJOA Field Trips. Can we get a motion to approve those on first reading?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve on first reading, policy GBEBDA, Criminal Records Check, and policy IJOA Field Trips.
Second.
Motion second, we need discussion. And then all in favor, that is unanimous in the property matter. If we get a motion to get Dr. Thorson, Dr. Jasan, property to Neville that we don't want it, they have to keep it, we are do whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the superintendent to release our interest in the property, I guess, back to the Neville community.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion on that? All in favor, that is also unanimous. Then we need a motion to go into executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations, and changes.
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, we go into executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations, and changes.
Second.
All in favor, unanimous. Thank you all.